I'd like to announce that the Board met in executive session for a personnel issue and a real estate issue. Please take their role.
Mr. DiMillo?
Present.
Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Heilmann?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
And Mr. Oliva is out of town this week.
Please stand for the opening prayer. We have tonight Reverend Davis Stipp Bethune from the Lannock Presbyterian Church.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, our God, you are one God. We acknowledge that the greatness of our nation which we celebrate often pales to your greatness, your power, your wisdom, your might, and that what we claim for ourselves doesn't begin to exhaust your dreams for us. Be present with us. Put your words in the mouths of these community leaders. May they move and be moved at your will as you did with kings and elders and leaders of old. Place your hands on and under the hands that lift cans of yard waste and refuse that remove the ugly and unclean from our neighborhoods. Give strength to the feet of all those who walk the beat or drive it. Empower those who respond to the siren call and baptize fire with water and rescue wayward cats. Place joy in the hearts of those passing plates of grilled delights and a grin on all the faces of those who receive them. May we bask in the glory of Firefly Light and half-moon-shaped watermelon rinds. Let this be the story of our community in these summer days. For now, oh God, hold our feet to the fire in this time of meeting. May we treat one another respectfully as your beloved children. May we temper judgment with mercy and curb triumphant enthusiasm at others' calls. For you are not some unmoved mover, but you are a transcendent God. So be present with us and bless us, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. In the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting off. We have actually a couple of proclamations here. Ryan Hamilton in the audience tonight. Please come forward. And Commissioner DiMillo has a proclamation.
I had the pleasure of attending the ceremony at the church.
Saint George's Church.
Jim McGarrett was there. Wonderful ceremony. First class. Very good. Pledge his proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud Ryan Hamilton, the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 300, Havertown. And whereas for Ryan's Scout project, he planned, organized, and delegated a group of volunteers to work on the transition of four bridges at the nature walk located at the quadrangle. And whereas, due to major tripping hazards and erosion, residents were not able to walk the trails. Ryan delegated vigorous individuals to jobs that first cleaned up the trail, laid crushstones, and then reinforced the four bridges in addition to building a new extension. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Ryan Hamilton for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Reclaim this 13th day of June 2015 by the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Mario Oliva, the President, and Chris Connell, Senior Vice President.
Congratulations.
Want your folks to come on up?
You guys do the work, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't be shy. I don't bite. I'm not one of the sharks down there. Would you like to say anything, Ryan?
Want to say something? Want to talk about your project a little bit?
Uh.
Okay.
We have Zachary Eddy and Jacob Andrew Wolf. Are they present tonight? They are not present tonight?
Yeah, Chris, Zachary Eddy is in California, and his parents and Zachary asked me if I would read this without him being here because he's in California. And as Steve said, we gave the proclamation out at Saint George's Church, but I told him I would read this. I think Dan's scout is also away, so. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud Zachary Eddy of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 300, Havertown. And whereas for Zachary's Eagle Scout project, he created two mobile library carts for Saint Christopher's Hospital for Children in Philadelphia, where he is treated for his juvenile arthritis. And whereas he guided volunteers to build two book crates shaped like hospital emergency crash carts and filled them with donated books in both English and Spanish for children of all ages. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Zachary for his many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Reclaim this 13th day of June 2015, Mario Oliva, President, Chris Connell, Vice President, Mr. DiMillo, Ms. Hall, Dan Siegel, Jeff Heilmann, Larry Holmes, Jim McGarrett, Bill Wexler, and Larry Gentile, Township Manager. Congratulations, Zachary.
I'll speak just for a second. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Connell. Jacob Wolf could not be with us tonight. He had a prior commitment. Commissioner Wexler actually stood in for me. I was out of town when Jacob Wolf was awarded his Eagle Scout on June 28th. I just want to commend him and actually his family because it is sort of a combination effort. He collected through the National Honor Society and the troop over 3,000 books for Children's Hospital. He has a record of service, and actually so does his family, and in many ways, he's sort of an exemplar of his family. His parents, his aunts and his uncles are all Havertown-born and bred. They have all gone through the schools, they have stayed in the community, and they demonstrate sort of what makes this community so wonderful. So I would like to commend Jacob and also sort of congratulate him because he will be attending my alma mater next year, Franklin and Marshall College, and I am sure, based on all of his honors, he will do extremely well as he has as a scout. And congratulations to the other Eagle Scouts. You all deserve a great deal of credit, and so do your families. Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Number three on the agenda township audit, Mr. Zlatnik.
I've reviewed the expenditures for the period commencing June 10th, 2015, and ending July 13th, 2015. I had certain inquiries that I raised with the finance director of our township. She answered each of my inquiries to my satisfaction, therefore, in my opinion, there are no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Next on the agenda is Citizens Forum. There will be 20 minutes for registered speakers, 20 minutes for agenda items. First on the list, I have Dr. Levin.
Thank you, Commissioners, and nice to see you here this evening, and residents. Also a pleasure to see you here. I have three issues to bring before you tonight. One based upon, the first one based upon the vote or the discussion that occurred at the workshop session concerning smoking in public places. An argument for open-air smoking in public places protects no one in this specious argument. I urge you to vote to prevent smoking in public places. It's the least you can do to protect the health of both the residents who walk their dogs, the children that go with their dogs, and the people who just visit the Skibow Park. I urge you to vote against this for several reasons, one of which is the fact that 450,000 Americans die from smoking each year. Forty-one thousand of them are about 10 percent from secondhand smoke. Women in particular are peaking in terms of deaths from smoking. They show a 600 percent increase. That's huge. Second, site contamination in the vicinity of Naylor's Run is an issue. I want you to know that there is a definite procedure for handling this, and it involves DEP coordinating with EPA to find out if this is related in any way to the Superfund site, or whether it is a standalone or an accident that's caused by a misadventure of someone with fuel oil or with oil of some kind. Act Two permits land recycling and is the Land Recycling Act under which this falls. The result is that a letter goes from the Department of Environmental Protection to the property owner. Please come in and let's have a talk. There's been something found on your property. At that talk, it is laid out that there will be an investigation, and the investigation is one of three. A statewide health standard, a special risk health standard, a residential standard. These are codified. There are ways of going about them. There has to be a report produced. Sometimes it takes time, sometimes it doesn't. But I want to point out to you that as soon as this is formed in both the owners of the property's mind as well as the DEP, it is codified by a legal advertisement of the form that I presented on this page, which comes from the Metro waiver. Finally, on the stormwater issues.
Thirty seconds. Okay. Doc, thank you very much. You can certainly come back after the other gentleman.
I use my three minutes now to cover the last point.
No, just because if everyone else does that, then we're into 24 minutes.
We're talking about very few.
Doctor, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Talking about very few people at this meeting.
Understand that.
And I think you're being.
It's three minutes, and that's what it is, and you can certainly have another three minutes after the other gentlemen have had their time. You know it's three minutes. You come up every month, and it's more than three minutes. I ask you to please respect the board as well. Please sit down. I allow you.
Why don't you respect the information?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Doc. Thank you.
Why don't you respect the information that's being presented to you on the stormwater issues?
David Freed is the next gentleman who is assigned on the agenda. Thank you, Doctor. You most certainly could come back.
Your bounds.
Yes, sir.
It's David Freed, 548 Washington. Because we were here about a month ago, just wanted to provide an update. And just before that, I just wanted to thank Steve DiMillo, Chris Connell, I think eventually Mario came out to the Harvard Road site, the McHannless site, and I think Jane as well. Maybe there were others there, too, but, you know, again, we're not there all the time, but we appreciate it. I just wanted to provide an update on some things. As you know, everything, you know, the DEP and everybody else is out there, the EPA. Since last meeting, as I'm sure you all know, we had, a handful of residents have actually caught and had recorded the contractor taking soil off the site and taking it to another township, I believe, project. Since that time, thanks to Steve and I guess everybody else who was activated, you know, forced that contractor to take the soil and return it to the site. That was you? All right, thank you. But, you know, we just wanted to say we appreciate the attention it's gotten, and, you know, there's still other questions. I think we're still going to have to keep an eye out on things. The barrels are still there. We just found out the barrels that, you know, was the oil and the oily water that was taken off the site. Actually, the guy didn't show up until Tuesday to test them, so they've been sitting there two and a half months, which isn't cool. But again, you know, we'll defer to the DEP in that. And then last Thursday, after the DEP was there, the builder went and started digging again over in the excavation where all the oil had been uncovered. And where they did, it was in an area that we had identified where pipes were coming out and just going into the side of the excavation. Well, they started digging there, and that's fine, but quickly, I mean, within a few inches of breaking the soil, it was heavy saturated oily tar soil. And then they started to remove pipes, and those pipes led deeper, and you could see they were troubled by it, and they started doing spot checks. Later on, I think I'd sent a note out to Steve or somebody else, I forget who hauls on the email strings, but had mentioned that no one was there testing them yet. And then I sent out, a few hours later, the Penni and R showed up to start testing because they were spot checking the property. And according to what I overheard them saying, they were just starting to look like, where isn't this property contaminated? Also, if you remember, there were 20 tons of soil hauled out, or there was a big pile back there, if you remember, for about the last two months on the site. They were hauled, it was hauled away because it was contaminated. You know, so, you know, some that were speculating that this was no big deal or whatever, there's clearly an issue, and thankfully, they, you know, they're addressing that, and they hauled the 20,000, you know, the 20 tons away. Basically, that's it. I mean, the only thing I'm suggesting is maybe you can help us just get the contractor or the builder to coordinate with the DEP so that they can schedule these, you know, so that when they're digging, they can schedule DEP or Penni and R to be there versus this gap, you know, because, and it's, I even, they even said, I even heard the, you know, the Penn guy saying, hey, if you just call me, I can be here when you're digging. So, you know, we're just trying to do all this ourselves, and, you know, we've got to work, too, you know, so it would be nice to have some oversight like that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas Booth?
I'm going to give my three minutes of data because of the situation. No, I'm under the gun.
Very good, okay. Mr. Thomas Beely.
I'm okay.
You're very good, okay. Dr. Levin, you have the opportunity, please return to the podium.
This will be very, very quick. And it's concerning the stormwater issues. You present, you presented the stormwater, the stormwater management problem on November Preliminary plans were submitted following that by Pononi. A new plan has surfaced recently to put a detention basin under the Chatham Park. No documentation on that has been submitted that I have seen. There are also other studies that have been done. Buried within David Pononi's oral presentation, if not the reported version, was his statement once again, without correction, no data are to be presented. That is outrageous. Whether that's his decision or yours, I do not know, but that's unacceptable. Engineers present their work. In the third paragraph in the bottom, I have listed, according to the News of Delaware County, the statement that he made as reported by the reporter. This is such a confused statement that I cannot see how you could take this for face value, a piece here and a piece there. Number one, conjectured results rather than data. Two, no organized report. Three, and this was sent apparently, to Congresswoman Meem, Representative Vitale, and a Delco president. Apparently, there is no data, there are no stormwater capacities, methods, calculations, precipitation estimates, other improvements, or an encompassing detailed report. This is truly dizzying. Much of the source of the stormwater dialogue that has occurred on November 19th has never been, has never been improved upon. There is no follow-up meeting to say, we have done this, we have done that. Frankly, you don't want us to care because I think that what we got was nonsensical engineering. It stretches the imagination of anyone who would want a coalist civil engineering. It is political engineering, short and simple. The application of scientific methods is engineering when it's applied to a practical problem such as stormwater. Finally, whatever has facilitated the built environment, in this case with stormwater, is civil engineering. Whatever has facilitated for this township, the near total elimination of scientific methodology in stormwater management, the clear articulation of scientific methods, and accurate comprehensive scientific reporting, has to stop right now before these strain further believability and bust Havertown's budget, which at this point, with the initial presentations, which could be accepted by you at any time, is a $8 million. It is unsustainable engineering when grants are the sole source and the township has no money for this.
Thank you very much, Doctor. That's it. Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now do 20 minutes of agenda items. Is there anybody on this side of the room that would like to speak on agenda items? Yes, sir? Please name an address.
My name is Kevin McCloskey. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward. I live at 2436 Whitby Road. There are several items on the agenda that relate to the sewer issues that the township has, and if I could just bear with me for a second, back up. I, like many people in this community, attended July 4th events. My family went to the Merwood Park event, and I know there's events at Paddock Park and the Grange, and these are the sort of events that help make our community special. Volunteers that put in a ton of effort before and during and after deserve a ton of credit for the efforts that they put in to make this a good time for the families and the kids that go. I want to thank the board for something at the Merwood Park event that really came in handy, that there's a bathroom now, an open and functioning bathroom that was there during the July 4th bathroom, and I know that that's not a simple matter. It's the efforts of many members of this board. I know Ms. Hall contributed a great deal in working with SEPTA and working with the Department of Recreation and several other entities to assure that that happened. What I would like to bring to the board's attention and sort of connect it to the sewer lines is I know that this is an issue, and it's not as simple as just leaving it open, but I would ask that we continue to try to find sensible solutions to have that bathroom open during regular times when everyday families use that playground. As a dad to a three-year-old who, no matter how many times you tell her to go to the bathroom, as soon as she crosses the bridge, she has to go to the bathroom. And the porta potty that used to be there on the other side of the field is gone now, so it creates a greater urgency to sort of, again, I know it's not a simple thing, it's just opening it up, there's issues that need to be worked out, but I think, as shown by getting it open in the first place, you know, a little work can come to some sensible solutions to get it open more often. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anybody else on this side of the room, first row, second row, third row, fourth row? Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice President, can I say something about the site?
Absolutely.
Last month, at the request of the residents, they requested a site visit, which Commissioner Connell and I did go to. We did meet with the residents and viewed the issues that they had. It was apparent, and the request that I think was Mr. Freed had was that a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners be held. And we determined, I think the board determined that it would be best handled at the state level since we have no jurisdiction over the DEP. So that month, around June 22nd, I did contact State Representative Greg Vitale. I did speak with him, and I did relay to him the concerns that the residents had regarding the issues that were there, and I did provide him with some pictures and my own opinion of what we saw when Chris and I were there. State Representative Vitale said that he would think about calling a special meeting, but probably would not, that he had a meeting there, the residents were there, and that he had expressed to them what the plan was. But again, I reiterated that some things had come up, and I thought it would be best that a special meeting be held, and be held in this room. Mario Oliva, the President of the Board, offered the facilities here to have the special meeting. What Mr. Freed is suggesting is smart. We should have the DEP there, but the state, I think, needs to do that when, and coordinate that when the digging is taking place. And I would, I would hope that State Representative Vitale coordinates that, and it should come really from his office, since Terry's been giving updates to the Board of Commissioners as well and to the residents as to what's being planned and what is happening. I still think that a special meeting with Greg Vitale would be very helpful to give an update as to where we were, where we're going. And having the DEP there, and if we need the Environmental Protection Agency, then fine, let's do that. But so far, at last month, he didn't think it was necessary, but I think I do. It would help get a lot of questions that you have. Instead of these emails, these constant emails, and I know what you're doing, and I don't blame you, we can get everything maybe outlined in one meeting and have a lot of answers to some of your questions. I appreciate your patience, and I sympathize with some of the, you know, lack of information coming, but I would suggest, and we could reach out to State Representative Vitale, but I suggest to reach out to him and make sure that they know that they need to be there when they're doing the digging. For example, if you had not been there recording what had happened, we would have never have known it went into Jeff's ward. No one would have known that. But if the DEP was there, because when I spoke to the DEP after you had sent that, I think it was Pat Patterson, was very upset that they had moved that soil. He was, he was concerned about that for a number of reasons. Turns out, I don't think the soil was contaminated. Am I wrong in saying that? It was not.
No, it was, it was not contaminated.
Not contaminated, but it, but the soil did go back.
Was still irresponsible, is what it was.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
It was really irresponsible.
And it's still, and then it went back to the site. I thought that was very concerning, and so did Pat Patterson of the DEP. So I think moving forward, yes, a meeting would be beneficial. That would have to come from Vitale's office, and hopefully the DEP will be there whenever the digging begins again. I'm sure it's every day, but. And we need an update on the soil. You haven't, have we received updates on the soil of what was, does anybody know? See, we don't, you did?
I don't think, we wouldn't get it.
We don't, we would.
We wouldn't get it.
I'm just, I'm just, I don't know if Terry emailed anything out.
They've given the salt, they've given the gas, there's 10,000.
I appreciate it, appreciate it, I know, but we can't back and forth.
That was my fault. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Anything else? You're okay?
No, thank you. You go.
No, and I'd like to dress the bit with the dirt. I appreciate you guys showing the video, all that stuff, and it should have never happened, is my point. It was taken care of the following day by the township manager, Ms. Witup, the township engineer, Doc from Public Works. The soil was tested, not contaminated, but I just think it was highly inappropriate to take soil from a site that even has the least possibility of being contaminated and taken it someplace else in the township. It's just very irresponsible. And I do think when, you know, when bids are open, responsibility should be something, you know, we look at for some of these contractors, I really do. So, but thank you again for showing the video.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, gentlemen.
And you know, I forgot, I was remiss. Larry and the township did move very quickly to get that back, and I was, I was thrilled because Commissioner Heilmann had called me up. He was very upset about it, and rightfully so. I would have, I would have been equally upset if that had been moved to my ward. So, thank you, Larry.
Be to call school, I had to be really upset.
That's right, for Jeff to call me, he was upset.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming back to the board with your updates. Dr. Levin, thank you very much for voicing your concern. Dr. Levin, thank you very much for voicing your concern about smoking in the public place, and as far as your clarifications on the contamination, we'll give that to the engineer with all your comments once again. Mr. McCloskey, thank you for coming to the board for the things about Merwood Park. And Commissioner Hall, do you have anything to add as for the restroom?
I'm just really happy it's open. It's been, thank you, Lori and Larry. That was a long journey to have that open, so it's a good thing. But I think maybe Commissioner Holmes, you can address that there were some reasons that they're not open all the time because of liability issues. Is that correct for the restrooms?
Well, I think Tim would be a better person to address those issues.
Address that? Thanks.
Those operational issues.
You know what happened with Paddock?
The goal is to use them in a more supervised setting.
Right.
As opposed to just dawn to dusk.
Right.
Yeah, one of the challenges of any public facility, especially bathrooms for reasons that aren't clear, is vandalism. So, right now, we have given the Civic Association a key, and we've told them that it's a little bit of an experiment, but we said they can open it whenever they feel comfortable, and if they want to work it out with their neighbors and their members, that somebody will have it, and they can open it and supervise it. As you probably know, we've given them a key and told them that they are welcome to open it. We have it open while our summer playground program isn't happening. We also will give it out to St. Dennis, groups like that, when they have. The challenge is to leave it open during the day. The bathroom was there two days before I got a call on a Saturday saying it had been vandalized.
Oh.
That was two days after, two years of working to get it in.
Wow.
So, it's a challenge, you know? It's a challenge, there's just no easy answer. But we certainly want it to be used. This board supported it, put it in. People are thrilled at Merwood. We've gotten quite a few emails from the Civic Association thanking us, and we told them if they want to work out a program where people come to the house and pick up the key, people like yourself want to say during the time I'm there, I'll supervise the bathroom, but that's the challenge. We kind of had the same situation at Paddock. It's working out pretty well. Some places we can leave them unlocked and we don't have issues, other places we have issues. It's kind of a trial and error, but we certainly, so far it's been a plus, but, you know, some stumbles on the way, but that's what we have. The Civic Association has a key, and we have it open during the day for our summer playground program.
Thanks, sir.
So far, it's a moderate success, but it's positive.
Yeah, it's huge to have it open during the summer program.
Huge, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let us move on then, Commissioner D'Amelio, for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Before I begin, I just want to say Terry from Greg Vitale's office has been very, very helpful in sending a lot of updates. Approval of minutes, regular meeting of June 9th, 2015, revised minutes of March 9th, 2015. Motion to approve the regular meetings, meeting minutes of June 9th, 2015, and revised minutes of March 9th, 2015.
Second.
Nine. Take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes, number six?
Mr. Vice President, I move we approve the warrant number seven of 2015 totaling These warrants comprise the general and sewer fund payroll for June 4, 2005, in the amount of 2015, in the amount of $900,133.16. General and sewer fund payroll for June 18 of 2015 in the amount of $682,670.36. The general sewer fund payroll for July 2 of 2015 in the amount of $592,228.2. General fund dispersments, number seven, in the amount of $1,697,257.78. Sewer fund dispersment, number seven of 2015, in the amount of $128,505.7. The community development block grant fund dispersment, number seven of 2015, in the amount of $32,633.11. Home grant fund dispersment, number seven of 2015, in the amount of $38,325. Capital project fund dispersment, number seven of 2015, in the amount of $75,366.98. And a credit card statement ending June 27 of 2015, in the amount of $6,975.20.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett.
Mr. Vice President, our township auditor has been through these dispersments. Any questions that they have raised for him, he has raised with our finance director, and our finance director has answered his questions to his satisfaction. He recommends that we approve these, and I do the same.
Okay, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Number seven, second reading on ordinance P-12, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-12, 2015, amending and supplementing Chapter 182 zoning by revising provisions for accessory structures.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Take the roll, please. Any discussion? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Item number eight?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P-14, 2015, accepting the transfer of ownership of sewer lines and related improvements within an easement area and authorizing a sanitary sewer and open channel easement agreement on a property located at 116 West Township Line Road, Haverford, PA.
Second.
As you know, this is the back of the Quarry Center, and this completes the agreement that we had with the developer on transferring the ownership back to the township.
Questions? Take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Number 10, ordinance number P-17, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-17, 2015, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Special purpose parking zones in front of 414 Washington Avenue, in front of 652 Dayton Road, in front of 338 Darby Road.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Questions, concerns? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Number 11, resolution number 1981, 2015. Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. Vice President, I move we adopt resolution number 8, 1981, of 2015, approving a comprehensive fee schedule for the convenience and ease of the general public in determining township fees for the cost of our services.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Questions, concerns?
No concerns. I want people to understand, this is a comprehensive list that's been approved numerous times. There are fewer than 10 changes in this list. It's worth noting to folks, we're making particular instances of certificates of use and occupancy, you know, applications being sought within, you know, very little time. We have increased the fees associated with that, slight five and $10 increases in some of the fire prevention fees, and addressing things that have become more modern phenomenon in our township, such as music festivals and special event race permits. Otherwise, this is just a housekeeping exercise of reapproving an already existing comprehensive fee schedule. I obviously recommend that it be approved.
I'd like to make two changes. The ordinance calls out a $10 accident police report fee and a police incident report. Those should be $15, not $10, I'm informed, so if we just make those changes.
I accept those changes, if I could find them.
Police accident report and police incident report.
Give me a letter and a number.
Q?
P, bottom of P.
Q?
P.
Got it.
The wonders of paste and...
Okay.
Got that?
Terrific.
Okay.
All right, so amended, I recommend we adopt this resolution.
Having been amended and accepted, could please take the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Number 12, resolution number 1982, 2015, for the multimodal transportation fund grant.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 1982, 2015, that Haverford Township hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $450,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for multimodal streetscape and pedestrian improvements along the west side of Darby Road from Strathmore Road to the Haverford Middle School, and be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Lawrence J. Gentili Township Manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrett. Comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Gentili, what's a multimodal?
This is the fourth of the four grants that we're putting in for stormwater improvements.
Right.
This one is a multimodal transportation grant, so it actually does two things. We can actually improve the streetscapes and transportation along the areas that we described here in the resolution, as well as doing stormwater improvement, so it's...
At the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Number 13, Commissioner Holmes, for the non-uniform uniformed police benefit.
Mr. Vice President, I move we approve our finance director's recommendation that we reduce our interest rate assumption from 8.5% to 8.25% for the actuarial valuation purposes for both our non-uniform and our uniformed defined benefit pension plans as of January the 1st, 2015.
Second.
Sorry, who seconded that? I'm sorry.
Commissioner D'Amelio.
Fellow commissioners, we discussed this last week at the work session. For those folks who did not see that or are watching tonight for the first time, this is a more conservative approach to the forward interest rate assumptions and valuations that we're making on our pension plans. It prevents, we hope, us from having any surprises in the future where the interest rate assumptions that are cooked into the valuation of our pension plans don't turn around to have been exaggerated or unreasonable, in which case we then have a larger obligation to try to make those pension benefits whole. It is in the interest rate climate that we have been dealing with and dealing with for some time. This is a move that a number of municipalities are making. It's a smart move on the part of our finance director, is once again just another example of the good kind of forward and conservative thinking that is, I think, saving us from the kind of surprises we've had in the past. It is a smart reduction. It is not a reduction, it'll have a significant cost to us this year, but it will have good long-term effects for us because we can, we can just simply, it's a better, clearer way for us to value the pension plan going forward. And let's face it, in the circumstance that we underestimate this interest rate assumption, it simply means that outperforming that is going to take the burden off us in the future to be funding up any shortfalls in our pension plan. So I recommend it wholeheartedly and commend our township manager, as well as our finance director, for making this recommendation to us.
Questions, comments, concerns? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Number 14, contract awards Newtown Trail 3, Manoa Road to the YMCA segment.
Mr. Vice President, motion to award the Newtown Trail 3 contract to Gessler Construction Company Media PA in the amount of $428,565, submitting the lowest responsible bid and contingent upon their execution of the contract and supply of the required bonds and insurance.
Second.
I have a question on that, Chris. These are the, this is the trail going up to the YMCA, right?
Yes.
And it's been decided that it will be paved?
Yes.
And then there will be no trees or any fencing towards the properties, towards Washington Avenue, anywhere like that?
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Mr. McGarrett, I think what we would probably do would be the best is that once this project is completed, then we can take a look at any particular areas that we believe that we need to be addressed, to address whether it's trees or other restricted areas. The grant won't pay for that type of stuff. That'd be something that we would have to...
Okay, well, I'm sure it's probably going to pass. I'm going to vote no on this because of the, you know, the situation with the homes along Washington, and the neighbors have already contacted me about they would like something put in there. Thank you, thank you.
What's the timing on this? Because of the construction of the new building, all the construction vehicles will be back in that area during the construction phase. Is this going to happen before or after during? How are we going to manage that?
Well, quite frankly, we can actually coordinate that with whoever gets the bid.
Do we have a certain amount of time to use that grant money for that purpose?
There is. I'll be honest with you, I don't know what that timetable is, but from completion to end, there is a time.
Because I'd hate to put McAdam down and ruin it with all those construction vehicles and trailers have to be parked back there during that construction phase.
You're talking about the construction for the proposed...
Township.
Oh, we don't believe that there's going to be any involvement with our, you know, we've already talked about that.
Okay.
And we...
Laws have been coordinated, that's my concern.
Timmy, got something? Timmy, do you have something?
Just as Larry said, it's kind of being coordinated. We anticipate the job will be done probably late October, but that last section, we probably won't pave that and work that out with the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
No. Number 15, it does pass. Number 15, Robinson Avenue Culvert replacement. Commissioner Siegel?
Yes. Motion to award the Robinson Avenue Culvert replacement to Donato Spaventa &amp; Sons, Inc. of Philadelphia in the amount of $246,117, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Hall, Heilman?
Heilman.
Did you second it then?
No.
Second, I did.
They're changing.
Mr. McGarrett is seconded.
Are they? Okay.
Okay.
Whatever.
Questions?
Nope.
Concerns, comments? Take the roll, please.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Number 15, new business? Number 16, other business?
Wait, it's new business. I was just asking Steve if you wanted to go first.
Certainly, number...
I wanted to ask the commissioners a couple of things. Mr. Panoni talked to us about Act 99, which I can't give you the details on it right now, but it's going to come down, I think, sooner than we had anticipated and will be part of our use and occupancy. And it's, I would ask the Board of Commissioners that in August, since it's kind of a little bit of a slow time for us and things aren't as crazy, if we could review our use and occupancy for the transfer of real property in the township and look at it entirely and have Mr. Panoni address this Act 99 so that we know. I know I've said this, you know, endlessly, but the more extensive and financially burdensome the use and occupancy becomes to the homeowner, which I believe Act 99 is going to bring in additional cost, I think it's worthy of us to review it and take a look at the entire use and occupancy before all of that happens and see if there's anything that we can do. I know I've talked about curbing until no one wants to hear it anymore, but I think if we could look at the whole thing, I would be most appreciative and maybe have an open discussion in August about that. And Mr. Panoni could be here, I would hope.
What is Act 99?
It has to do with some sort of storm...
The INI.
Pardon me?
The INI, it's about inspecting the sewer line.
Right, the sewer lines. You inspect the sewer... Sometimes I do it now, inspect the sewer line from, you know, the house to the street to make sure that you don't have any trees or whatever. But they're going to want that done every time there's a new use and occupancy. It's expensive. It's very expensive. And if there is an issue, you know...
Really expensive.
It's really expensive. So if that's going to fall on the homeowner as well, you know, because you can have the roots...
Coming from the state down?
Yes. So you can have, you know, all of us know we can have roots in the sewer line or roots in the water line, and that's why OAK was always sending out all these notices and everything. So it's just one more thing they're going to ask the homeowner to do it.
Deals already fall through on some of the items that are there, the curbing and different things. I mean, when it comes down to, I think if you're adding another really big burden as far as...
I think it's a good idea if we look at the... If we could get a copy of the entire ordinance on UNO to review before the next work session.
Possibly we could have Joey here also.
Act 99 doesn't force you to do it at the UNO time. It's a recommended practice because it's the only stick you have to wield to get it done, similar to way...
But that's what they say about everything, the curbing, all that stuff.
Right, understand. But I'd like to see the entire ordinance. But I agree, I think it's, you know, it's an opportunity to take a look at it fresh and get this thing modernized.
I think so too. And we're, although I, you know, and Mr. Panoni did say that to us, that he wasn't sure that this was going to be something that they demanded, but we're being told at the real estate level that it is going to be. Now, you know, I don't know, but I know the Pennsylvania Association of Realtors is looking into it, but they're telling us it's going to be an issue. So I'd like to take a look at it.
That wouldn't be the first time Chicken Little came screaming, "Care about the sky falling down," would it?
I know, but I'm just saying, since we're addressing curbing, if we could take a look at the entire ordinance, I think it would be...
Good idea.
Okay.
Review for a discussion in August, okay.
Thank you, appreciate it. And also, I would like to see Greg Vitale come to our meeting just once. Just talk to us, just once, just before I go. I would find that, I think I would find it enlightening, maybe not. But if he could come, that would be helpful.
Well, if he's watching, maybe.
If he's watching, maybe he will.
He does not have a TV, so we know he's not watching.
He doesn't own a television.
He doesn't.
And lastly, I was going to ask the solicitor, and he is not here, but you are, I'm sorry, you are here. I apologize.
We have Caitlin Seearle tonight filling in for Jim.
I was going to ask if there has ever been, and if you could ask, and maybe you could investigate this for us, has there ever been any time that the Board of Commissioners has asked if there could be term limits on commissioners within the township? I was looking through my trusty Home Rule of Pennsylvania, and I'm not as well schooled in it as I would like to be, so I thought maybe the solicitor might be able to answer that question for me. Thank you, appreciate it. And I apologize for not remembering your name off the top of my head.
No problem.
As long as it's many more than three, I have no problem.
I've thought about that. And that is all I have for new business.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Anyone else under new business? Okay, Commissioner D'Amelio for other business?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, yes. The Haverford Township Police Department is hosting a National Night Out event at the Quarry Center at 116 West Township Line Road, August 4th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Haverford Township neighborhoods are invited to join together with thousands of communities nationwide for their 32nd Annual National Night Out. National Night Out is an event aimed at raising awareness of crime and drug prevention, which is coordinated by the National Association of Town Watch and locally sponsored by the Haverford Township Police Department in conjunction with Haverford Town Lowes, Giant, and Panera Bread. On Tuesday, August 5th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM, residents of Haverford Township and across the nation are asked to lock their doors, turn on outside lights, and spend evening outside with neighbors and police. During this event, representatives from Haverford Township Police, Fire, and EMS departments will be on hand. There will be a brief canine demonstration with an opportunity to meet and greet your favorite canine. Children will have a chance to touch and explore police cars, police motorcycles, fire trucks, ambulances, and tow trucks. So please come out to join us and promote community safety, along with some fun, food, and games.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hall.
Steve, that's Tuesday, the 4th, you said the 5th.
Do what I say.
Huh?
It's a typo in our preference.
Oh. It's the 4th, right? Yeah, I originally read the 4th, and then I hear it's the 5th.
Second time you said the 5th.
It is the 4th.
I take the 5th. Commissioner Hall?
I would like to report that the Haverford Township Civic Council has initiated a new committee that is one of their initiatives for this year, 2015 into 2016, and it is going to be called Haverford in Bloom. It will, I believe, dovetail nicely with the Economic Development Committee that we have now in place on the Board of Commissioners. And the goal is that this committee, Haverford in Bloom, will be adopting areas throughout the township. We actually touched on 10 specific areas the other evening, and we narrowed it down to five for this year. And I'm going to work with them to identify these different areas and see if we can adopt public spaces to add to the beautiful job that Mr. Gentili has done throughout the township with these gardens along Darby Road and other places, and see if we can't help in some way so that there can be a beautification in place that doesn't fall entirely on the township. And I think that some of the initial spots are going to be SEPTA, so I'm going to try to work with them to see if we can adopt certain spaces at certain train stations and then different areas around the township so that we can get people involved and help to work with the Economic Development Committee in revitalization.
Penfield, such a desperate...
Right, and Penfield's on there. The Rotary Group has already told me that they're adopting Ardmore Junction.
Right, super, thank you.
Jane, what are the five areas that were identified?
You know, Bill, I don't have in front of me, I think it's Beechwood, because Beechwood was done at one point, the SEPTA station at Beechwood, and it's an easy fix over there. Ardmore Junction is going to be done by the Rotary. Ardmore Avenue has been addressed by SEPTA pretty extensively already, but Marion Golf Manor will probably take care of that. Penfield was another one. And then also, we are going to look at the corner of, down on Haverford Road. There's a corner right at the bridge of that Winwood Station, and then a section on West Chester Pike that I was not familiar with. And I can email you the others, I don't have it in front of me right now. But there were five that they picked for this year, but there were 10 that they wanted to do over the next probably 18 months. But we wanted to connect with Mr. Gentili on that too, to make sure that we're doing things that make sense and in good spots that work with the township.
Thank you very much.
But I'll send that to you, Bill, because I do have that. Commissioner Wexler?
Mr. Siegel?